Welcome, everyone. This is our Human Resource Personnel Changes Meeting. It is June 9th, 2022. The time is 11:00 a.m. I'm calling this meeting to order. Attending in person are Commissioners Brooks and Duncan. Chairman Philios is on the phone. Are there any changes to the agenda? I would just suggest that we move item four to the top of the list so David Callahan can get to his next appointment. Bill, is that okay with you?
Leslie.
Sure.
Yes.
Leslie, can I say a couple of things before we start?
Sure.
Okay, just so that everybody understands, some of you are already aware of this. The reason I'm not present is I'm undergoing immunotherapy for cancer treatment. It's not a big deal. It's something that I'll beat, but it is part of the process. And so from time to time, I'll be out. It's pretty much not more than a few hours a week. Today, I'm delayed because AstraZeneca is the sponsor of the Phase 3 trial that I'm in, and there's a computer glitch in terms of specifying the medication. So that's what's holding me up and the reason I'm not there. But anyway, so thanks for your patience. The second thing is, when we approve some of these requests that are before us, bear in mind that we're planning a very aggressive, and I think it's about $7.2 million loaded increase if we approve it for fiscal year '23 for wages. If we are going to approve what is on the agenda today, I'm going to have to, I speaking for myself, ask Sylvia that some people cannot get increases and expect with a higher base wage that they're going to get another substantial increase over and above that come October. So this is going to have to be factored in. We all know, Leslie, Bill, and I, that we're bleeding, and we know that we need to make some changes. But we also have to be mindful of the fact that when we give these increases and we raise the base wages, it's going to make achieving that aggressive target for increases for fiscal '23 more difficult. But anyway, I just want to say that. Go right ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right, item number four we'll handle first, which is an exception to Policy 120. David?
Thank you, Commissioners. David Callahan, I'm appreciative of the deference. We are asking for this transfer because it's a person that's familiar with county's procedures and operations and would like to come to work for my group in the front counter. And we would like their salary to be commensurate with what it is today. And so we're asking for a grade two, step 11, which is almost spot on with where that person is. And of course, we'd appreciate it so that there's not a learning curve, but also because this is one of two people that are applying, and this one's just right for us.
Okay. So is it going to cause compression?
I reviewed community development staffing levels, and it's a grade two, which is the only one they have. And based on it even going to that, 1772, the next grade that they have is a grade four, and it's below what people are making there at that grade level.
Okay. And then years of service, is that kind of what we're making an exception to? Because typically, they would get a grade 11 if they're, I mean, step 11.
I don't know who the individual is, so.
Okay. All right, well.
Yeah, I don't think that's part of the issue. Here's the problem with me is that we have a person that's.
Right. Sure. Okay. And my understanding is we're going to be making changes to some of those lower grades, anyway.
Correct.
So, yeah, for the October.
Right.
We have a provision that allows the positions as it.
Right. Okay. Bill, any questions?
No.
Chris, any questions?
Nope, I'm fine.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve Community Development's request for exception to Policy 120.
Second.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Philios.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Back to item number one, request to convert booking clerk position to two part-time positions. Sheriff's Office?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Stu Miller for the record. This is to, we want to take one of our vacant booking clerk positions and split it in two to two part-time positions. We've had trouble filling the full-time positions. We currently have four of them that are vacant. We've had interest, actually, in two part-time positions, Captain. And basically, when I asked for the, what it would cost, it'd be a cost savings of FY '22 decrease of $5,001.21 and FY ' '23 decrease of $13,656.
Great. Bill, questions?
None.
Chris, questions?
Nope, I think the numbers bear out. I'm good.
Okay. Motion?
I move that we approve the sheriff's request to convert booking clerk positions to two part-time positions.
Second.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Philios.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item number two, pay adjustments for 911, emergency communication officer laterals.
Ryan Higgins, for the record. As everybody's aware, the 911 center is bleeding personnel. We have four trainees in the system right now. Two of them are laterals. They were brought in at two years less than their years of service. I want to bump them up to what their years of service would be. So Stephanie Olson has seven years of service, and she's currently being paid at five. And the other one, Brienne, has got six years of service, and she's currently being paid at four. I want to bring them up to what their, what their years of service would be. The reason for this is it's a recruiting tool for other laterals coming into the area. Plus, it's a retention tool for them. We don't need to lose any more people. We're almost half staff right now, so.
Mm-hmm. Okay. HR's comfortable with it. Yep, good. Bill, questions?
No.
Chris, questions?
I'm good.
Okay, motion?
I move that we approve the pay adjustment for 911 ECO laterals.
Second.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Philios.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item three, stipend for jail watch commander higher duties.
Commissioners, Stu Miller for the record again. So we have a jail sergeant that was injured on duty and is currently off, on FMLA leave. And we have taken one of our senior deputies that tested for sergeant the last time. He's currently acting as a lead deputy and a watch commander. Our request is to move him to a detention sergeant, year one salary, while she's away, since he's doing the job duties of a sergeant. Because of the, of the state insurance fund compensation for the current sergeant that's off duty, 66%, I think that this is going to be a fairly budget-neutral position. Just without that, though, it's FY increase of $5,595, and FY '23 it'd be $16,785. But again, I think that with the state workman's comp, 66%, it would be pretty much a neutral position.
Are we expecting this to last into FY '23?
I have no idea.
Okay.
And as soon as she comes back, which I'm hoping is fairly soon, we would return him to his pay grade, or she'd take over as a sergeant again.
Okay. All right, yeah, we do higher duty pay for this, these kinds of issues all over the county. So Bill, questions?
No.
Chris, questions?
Yeah, is Sylvia okay with this?
Yes. Yes, it aligns with comp policy.
I think I heard yes.
Where you bring them to at least minimum of the grade. And that's what they're doing.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the stipend for jail watch commander higher duties.
Second.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Philios.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item five, interim pay request for upcoming land records manager.
Commissioners, this is Bayla Kova, ex Cooten County Assessor. In accordance with Cooten County Policy 120, we are requesting that the board respectfully approve interim pay. We've had a retirement. Our previous land records manager retired, took leave on June 3rd, and for the interim from now until we fill the role, which will happen on July 18th, we are asking the board to authorize interim higher pay for Tony Harbison.
All right. All right. Okay.
I did, I would like to also add that I have a revised corrected memorandum in front of you. The previously submitted memorandum had an incorrect hourly rate. It has been corrected.
Right.
And so the new memorandum does indicate the correct value.
Yes, thank you.
The current one.
All right, any questions?
No, it seems this is consistent with policy.
Okay. And Bill, any questions?
No.
All right, motion?
I move that we approve the interim pay request for upcoming lands records manager for the assessor's office.
I'll second.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Philios.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item six, overtime request, Specialty Court. Carleen?
Good morning, Carleen Behringer, Trump administrator on behalf of District Court. Commissioners, I'm here this morning to talk about our overtime budget. District, the District Court overtime budget is set at $10,000 for fiscal 2022. To date, we've already spent $16,732.65. This increase has really been impacted by COVID and all the extra hours we've had to put in relocating our court system, especially for jury selection. So today, we would like to ask to increase this line item to $25,000 by transferring $15,000 from a line item 7005, which is the salaries for temporary and seasonal. That line item currently has a balance of $16,322.
Okay. Auditor's Office, is there any concerns about the transfer?
We don't have any available information. It's just what you guys decide to do next year.
Okay. So, Carleen, I do have a couple of questions. I'm not, I'm fine with the transfer, but Specialty Court, so is this overtime being experienced by every person in that pool?
This is for the bailiffs primarily and possibly some funding for my assistant.
Okay.
Where, it's not for the treatment court coordinators.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
It's primarily for the bailiffs.
Okay.
There's been times where we have to start at 5:00, 5:30 in the morning, setting up the fairgrounds or going out to the eagles and then knocking it down or coming in on Sunday. And unfortunately, the rates for COVID are going back up, so we might be in that same predicament again.
Okay. And then next year, I think you had put in there for extra overtime?
I, if my memory serves me correct, yesterday I asked for $30,000.
Okay. And then with this additional deputy TCA position, would you expect the overtime to remain that high with another body?
That, that person would be doing the work of a bailiff, and that's a state employee, so they wouldn't be, her, or he or her job function would be different, and that, they wouldn't be doing the same job function that someone would be eligible for that overtime.
I'm sorry, I was thinking of your assistant's position. Would her overtime be that high with this new?
It could be, just depending on, you know, the circumstances. Sometimes we help, help out the clerk's office, you know, just to, just to keep the wheels turning on the bus in District Court. We do what we have to do. So our civil jury trials are starting. That's going to be a big amount of time. So I, I think it's going to be a little bit higher than typical,
Okay.
the typical overtime.
Thank you. Bill, Chris, any questions?
No.
All right.
Yeah, I have one. Okay, so if I understand correctly, you're transferring around figures $15,000, but taking it up to 25, so we're coming in with another $10,000. Is that correct?
It's just a line item move, so they won't be hiring temporary and seasonals?
Okay, so, but the line item move is the $15,000, right?
Yes.
Correct.
And the request is for 25, if I heard it correctly?
That will bring up the amount to 25. There's 10 in there now. 16's been spent with the moving of the seasonal position.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Okay, fair enough. I'm fine.
Budget neutral. Okay, motion?
Budget neutral, got it. Okay.
I move that we approve the overtime request for Specialty Court.
And I'll second.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Philios.
Aye.
All right, and that has been approved. Number seven is temporary intern for the prosecutor's office. Barry?
Commissioner?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. After I was talking to Sylvia, could we revisit number three one for one quick second? I would just like to ask if we could retro that to, he's, he's been filling that role since the second. Pay period started on the fifth. I'm just wondering if we can retro that to the beginning of this last pay period, which started last Sunday.
And Auditor's Office, is that an issue?
What was the, what was?
Beginning of the last pay period.
It started in this pay period that I'm in right now.
In the current pay period?
Correct.
Issue, a significant issue? No. So pay period 13?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So Dave, Darren, probably another motion. Okay.
Go ahead and make it.
Sure. I move that we, with the approved stipend for the jail watch commander, that it is effective pay period 13.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Philios.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so that one is set. And back up to number seven.
Thank you, Commissioners. Barry McHugh for the record. I'm asking for some funding for a temporary position for a legal intern. This would be the second legal intern position that I've requested funding for, and primarily it is to shore up the work in the misdemeanor category. We've got two positions that we've committed to hiring individuals who are currently basically studying for the bar exam and waiting hopefully to pass in the late summer. And what that does is it leaves us with sort of a gap in terms of our resources in relation to the work. So we have, again, one intern that will be here over the summer is being paid. This is a second intern, and there's both a need, and then there's also the reality that we've lost at least a couple interns who committed to come to the office but then found paying jobs and left because they need to make money and pay their own bills. And so I'm asking the, or the Commissioners to approve this interim position, which would be full-time for the summer and then part-time through the end of September. And I believe I have plenty of unspent or salary-saving type situation, but, and I didn't plan this, but coincidentally, the attorney positioning that is on the agenda is almost the identical number in dollar savings. So I think there's money there to allow for this.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just really have a wicked headache, so concentrating on this stuff is not as easy as usual. So you had interns, they left, now you want two more interns.
And when I say they left, that's been over the last school year.
Yes, okay.
Currently, I have one in that's committed for the summer and into the fall, who's being paid. And I have another who's in, who's been, you know, committed for the summer, but I'd like to be able to pay him to kind of secure that workload into the fall.
All right, so we'll have two paid interns.
Correct.
Okay, and then you have the money from salaries. So Bill, Chris, questions?
No questions.
Chris?
Yeah, so two paid interns, one existing and one that we're adding?
That's correct.
Got it. Okay, I'm fine.
All right. Motion?
I move that we approve the temporary intern for the KCBA.
Second.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Philios.
Aye.
Right, motion carries. And item eight, exception to Policy 120. So which one, it's exception to Policy 120. So which one is this?
Let's talk about the AT-2 hire first.
Okay.
Since we were just talking about that in terms of money available. This is a AT-2 position who I'm asking to be hired at a step three rather than a step two. This individual has enough experience in, I would say, directly applicable work for a step two, but he's coming from another prosecutor's office where he made, just under what I'm asking for the board to approve, and so a slight increase in salary, as well as he has three years in, in the insurance industry, where he worked both before and after going to law school, both domestically, and his last job was in London, England, working for Lloyds of London. So he has sort of different sort of experience, not specifically applicable, but certainly brings a different kind of knowledge base that, that can be helpful. But again, understanding the rules with HR, it's not directly applicable.
Okay. Sylvia, is there anything to add?
I didn't see any problems when I ran the prosecutor's employee position pay reports. They, he would, the individual would still be coming in less than his existing staff.
Okay.
Fine.
Good. So then I would say, if this position remained open, it would actually be a higher amount projected in FY '23 than it would be at this step. And thank you, Auditor's shaking their head, so.
Right.
Yeah, okay. I, I guess I'm fine with it. Yeah, I don't know. Chris, Bill, questions?
So, yep. So we're okay budgetarily?
Yeah, for '22, we are. For '23, that's what I was verifying. If this position were open as of budget time, then it would have been projected as market in FY '23. So the fact that it's being filled now, then it will actually be a little bit less going in '23, if that makes sense.
Yep, okay, understood. Yep.
Is there a motion?
I'm good.
I move that we approve the prosecuting attorney's request for exception to Policy 120.
Second.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Philios.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine, another exception to Policy 120. Barry, you're exhausting.
With good reason.
Yes.
So this is an investigator position. The individual we're hiring has actually eight years of experience as an officer, either patrol or detective, and two years beyond that as a corrections officer. So most specifically, the law enforcement experience certainly is applicable to the investigator position. And so I've asked for a step seven. He would probably theoretically qualify for a step eight and maybe even beyond that, but I'm trying to keep it within striking distance of the current investigator, so it doesn't bump up salary so much. But it's, it's, it's above five, obviously, and.
Right.
But with his years of experience, I think he's qualified for that.
With the shift up, essentially, the promotions in that department, is he going to be making less than the person who's taking their place?
Yes, because the current position will be promoted into a grade 11, and there will be an applicable increase in salary for that person when it happens.
Right. And then, but the person that's vacating that for the promotion, are they at that same step that you're bringing this person in, or are they a higher step?
Are we talking about this position or the position that is to be promoted to?
The position that we're making the exception for, the person in there right now is at what step?
Five.
Step five.
Okay, so this person would be brought in higher than
Yes.
that person. But of course, it won't cause compression because that person will be promoted. Bill, Chris, questions?
No questions.
Yeah. Okay, so are we creating a new position? Is that it? We're adding one?
No. Commissioner, we have a supervisor position. The individual in that position is retiring, and that's creating the opening that will allow for a promotion.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Understood. And, and the budgetary impact is what?
Increase of 11, $1,111 in this year, and then next year, an increase of $3,809.
Okay, okay.
However, when this promotion happens, when the promotion happens, won't the person be making less than the outgoing supervisor?
I don't know exactly. I'm, I can't, I don't have those, I guess I didn't do that calculation.
Okay, I, I would have a feeling that's typically what happens. You're not going to move
Yeah, probably.
up into there, because he's
People who's retiring has been with the county almost as long as I have, so 10, 11 years at least.
Okay, so, so potentially, it's budget neutral for '23?
Potentially, yes.
Yeah.
That position currently is at a step six.
Okay, so would you be doing the promotion at a step six?
I can commit to making sure that it's budget neutral.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we
Sounds good.
I move that we approve the exception to Policy 120 for the prosecuting attorney's office.
Second.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Philios.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
But motion carries. Item 10, higher duty pay adjustment for the Auditor's Office. Jim?
Thank you very much. And before I start, I would just like to say, Chris, you're in our thoughts and prayers. And.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate it.
All righty. What we have in, in the Auditor's Division, our finance director position is open currently. It has been filled with our longest-term employee in the Auditor's Division, Keith Taylor, who has been our deputy finance director for the past few years. But his job as director, as deputy director, still needs to be done. And the job of the finance director, quite honestly, it needed to be divided up. Keith has brought forward an idea to actually take the higher pay that he was receiving and divide it up among two other individuals who are taking on part of the workload of the job as finance director. We have talked to HR, and the proper way to do this, according to Sylvia, is to return Keith from a grade 17 back to his previous level, which was 13, at, at a step nine, and the salary savings would then be going to the other individuals who are our accounting manager and our budget accountant. 25% for the accounting manager, 25% for the budget accountant. Keith would retain 50% of the increase in pay. And the open position from the finance director, the highest compensated position in the Auditor's Division, will fund the higher interim pay. Any questions on that?
Nope, I don't think so.
No.
Okay. Chris?
Yeah, the question, Sylvia, can you, just wait. I mean, I understand thematically it makes sense, but from policy perspective, can you comment?
Chris, you're very pixelated, but what I'm understanding, you say for Sylvia to explain the division of math essentially per policy.
Okay, so Policy 120 allows for higher duty pay on an interim basis, and typically, one individual is moved into that position. But we have seen some past requests where the departments are saying, we need to split this out among a couple of staff members and and so forth. So, typically, the policy says minimum of the grade or 5%. So, they're within that ballpark. To place a staff person on a specific step, it's going to raise it somewhat, but based on their analogy and how we've talked about it, I think it's appropriate, and the board has done that distribution of separation of duties and given higher duty pay in the past.
Okay. So, Chris, I just want to reiterate that it's 25% to the counting manager, 25% to the budget accountant, and 50%...
Right, I heard that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Reduction, yeah, to Keith, yeah, I got it. I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay. All right, is there a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the auditor's office request for a higher duty pay, for a higher duty pay adjustment.
Second.
Phil Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item 11, stipend for extra training activities for auditor's office.
Thank you, Commissioner Duncan. The grant accountant, we're asking for a stipend for our grant accountant. For the past six months, she has been training our tax accountant position, and this position distributes all the money to the taxing districts, works quite a bit with the treasurer and the assessor, as well as IT. And her regular job has just continued to grow with the growth of grants in the county. So, I would like to give her a retention stipend of $1,925 for the past six months and $325 per month until the end of this fiscal year, and it's budget neutral and will not affect fiscal year '23.
So Sylvia, the sheriff's department has these FTO positions, these training positions that get higher, essentially, I don't think you call it higher duty pay, but really a stipend for special duty pay, thank you. And so, is this similar to that situation?
Well, the higher duty pay is paid off of their hourly salary in addition, so it could be anywhere from $1.50 an hour to $3.25 an hour, I believe, for a detective. So, they're doing it as a lump sum, as a bonus, because it's a temporary...
Right. Yeah, that's fine.
So, you know, it doesn't seem out of line or anything from my perspective, and we had talked to, I had talked with auditor's office on it.
Okay. Chris, Bill, any questions?
None.
No, I think I'm okay. I just, my concern was that it be consistent with what we've done, you know, in other departments, and it sounds from what I'm, if I'm hearing Sylvia correctly, that that is the case. Is that correct?
You have awarded stipends for other individuals who have done temporary, like done the two jobs for many months and so forth, and that amount has varied a little bit, but it's probably based on a level of complexity.
And Chris, we did this for OEM, and we just recently did it for training division at KCSO.
Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, so it's a temporary measure?
Yes.
Yes, it'll end fiscal, at the end of the fiscal year.
At the end of the fiscal year, okay, I'm fine.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the stipend for extra training activities from the auditor's office.
Second.
Phil Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, and next is compensation increases to address compression public defender's office. Good morning.
Isn't this the one we took up last week with Ann during her budget session?
Yeah, this is the one that you and I agreed to bring forward mid-year instead of waiting till October.
Yes, yes, okay.
Good morning. We are asking to have salaries adjusted. Compression was created last year when raises were given. We had several people that did not have a step advancement, which meant their pay was the same as people that they were training. Those are outlined in our memorandum. We have one who is a grant-funded position, but we're asking that all of the grade six positions listed be moved up to step three. Also in that memo is our administrative supervisor. When the changes happened last year from letter to number grades are equivalent to the prosecutor's position, they've been J's, and ours was not a grade 10 during the transition, and so we're asking that that position be made a grade 10 for parity purposes.
Okay. Essentially, does the job description need to be changed?
Updated, yeah.
The job descriptions are nearly identical. There's one, years of experience or education, I think, that needs to be adjusted, and we'll take care of that, but that shouldn't stop us from doing that today.
Sure. Okay, so I just want to, I kind of just want to separate the two, like the, all the grade sec, all the grade six steps and stuff, fine, but I want to make sure that we cover that extra piece on the grade change for the other position. So, Dave, Darren, can we approve it before that's done, or we just approve them going ahead with the process the next time we come back and approve the changes?
Two steps.
Two steps, okay. All right.
We, I discussed that with Sylvia this morning, and the job description itself is the same. The duties are the same, and both descriptions, both were categorized the same as J's all the way through. It should have been a 10 last year, just like the position from the prosecutor's office.
Right, except for that one change in the experience level.
Was in the experience field, and that could be adjusted.
Yeah, okay, so that'll work as one. We can do it all at once, okay. Okay, Bill, Chris, questions?
Questions?
No, this is consistent with what we discussed last week.
Yes, except for one additional piece that is also appropriate to address at this time, it's just a different change that has to be made. So, I'm thinking that what is presented, we can go ahead and approve with the extra approval of updating that job description to reflect the similar job in the county.
Fair enough, that's fine.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the compensation increases to address compression issues by the public defender.
And I'll add in the change to the admin supervisor job change, I mean, job description change. Okay, second.
Phil Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 13, retention bonuses, public defender.
As this commission is aware, our county is having a lot of difficulty attracting...
I'm sorry.
We're having a lot of difficulty countywide attracting and retaining qualified employees. Over the last year, we've had a pretty good loss in numbers of attorneys and numbers of other staff. Currently, we have six attorney positions open. We'll have seven as of July 1st. Since I was here for my budget meeting last week, I had an attorney put in their notice this week. We have, I think, three staff positions open at this time as well. Because we have so many vacant positions, we have unused A budget, and I'm asking that we be allowed a one-time retention bonus. The way that I've requested that we do that is kind of a staggered amount based on years of service. No distinction between attorney, legal assistant, secretary, or investigator, but years of service. And so, I'm requesting that we utilize that excess A budget so that we can give bonuses outlined in the memo in order to hopefully retain the people that we have. We can't lose anymore.
Sure. So, I guess my comment would be that it would be monthly, divided up monthly until the end of the year for a couple reasons. Number one, it's consistent. We did that with community development, with 911, with detention deputies as well, and so it will still equal the bonus amount that you have here, but we'll go ahead and do it monthly, if that's okay.
Sure, sure. I am aware that that's consistent with the practice of the BOCC recently.
Okay, and then...
And I...
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, and I'm going to say, and I agree with that, Brad Wilson.
Yeah, that's all. Bill, did you have questions?
No, I just think it's a good idea to pay the retention bonus, but not hand somebody a handful of cash, but rather, so I think that's a good idea.
And walk out, yeah.
That's right.
How much are we talking about?
A total of $79,000, and it's based on service up to three years is about $250,000. Three to seven is that next $500,000, and then seven plus would be $750,000.
Yes.
Okay, and that's through the end of the fiscal year?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, and we've got, what is it, four months or something like that? Okay.
Yeah.
No, I think, yeah, I think this idea is a good one. And you're fine budgetarily, Ann? You've got sufficient money in your A budget?
Yes.
Yes, I'll still have an excess at the end of the fiscal year.
Yep.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay. Motion.
I move that we approve the retention bonuses for the public defender's office to be paid in a staggered format.
A second.
Phil Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
And I would add that it's through the end of fiscal year '22? Aye.
Yes, I agree with that. All right, motion carries. Public comment. Hearing none. 11:41, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.